I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the February 4th, 2025, meeting of the school committee. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go right into the high school representatives.
All right. Hope we're all having a great evening. We just wanted to start by saying midterms have just come to an end. And students are preparing for a fun, filled second semester. We have semi for the freshmen and sophomores, prom for the junior and seniors, and then to top it all off, graduation for the seniors at the end of the year.
All the winter sports have been really good. I know I've been to a lot of games, and so has Mary. It's been really fun to watch. So, boys and girls basketball and hockey are all on the road to playoffs, which is really exciting for the school.
And additionally, we would also like to highlight the Hockamok SVS. This is an initiative that students have brought together as a result of the amazing opportunity from the North Attleboro SVS. We hope to bring all Hockamok schools together in order to have a kind of unified SVS, Student Voice Summit. This will take place on February 13th in the Media Center. And additionally, another contribution of active minds and a benefit of FlexBlock, we had Wes Woodson come in to give a segment on mental health. And this is a really engaging and interactive experience on test anxiety and feelings and emotions of teenagers. And we had a representative from the Navy come in to give this presentation on nuclear power. So, awesome stuff.
Anybody have any questions? Chisholm's coming. We're going to hold on just one second.
A little late. We already did it.
Chisholm, we were just talking to your colleagues. If you want to add to the student rep update.
If you want to go a little more in depth about the SVS?
Hi, everyone. I'm at Virginia, but so I'm back. So, we're hosting a Hockamok SVS on February 13th. And it's organization, like a program started because of SVS, which happens at North Attleboro. So Serena Akimbo Boye, Stacy Sebi, and myself thought it would be nice to make it a bigger thing and bring the Hockamok students together to discuss like problems within their school.
We caught you on the.
To discuss problems within their school and come together to bring solutions almost, and also like just bounce ideas off one another. So, we're going to be having that next week, and we're excited to see what's to come.
Sounds sweet. Great. Thank you. Any questions in follow-up to Chisholm? All right, so Meg Camery is not here, so we're going to start with Melissa Toal.
To Hig.
To Hig.
Yeah, good luck. Thanks. I'm not Meg Camery, by any means, but thank you for the opportunity. So, I'm actually doing an internship for Special Education Administration. I know many of your faces, but for those of you that I don't know, nice to meet you. Currently the team chair at Martin School. And so, I've been fortunate enough to kind of be part of this policy review process with Meg and Michelle and Talia and Corinne throughout this year, which has been fantastic. As you may recall, Desi conducted an integrated monitoring review at the beginning of this school year. And part of that process in looking at some of our special education and civil rights standards was a review of the physical restraint policy. So while physical restraint falls under a civil rights standard, it is implemented and overseen by the Office of Student Services. So, hence why Meg has been involved in reviewing the policy and updating it. So, I know you have it in your backup. And so, I just wanted to highlight some of the additions and revisions to the policy that have been made for your review tonight. The first and most important thing is that physical restraint, of course, is always a last resort in use for any student need that presents itself. But at the forefront of physical restraint policy is all of the de-escalation and proactive measures that go into avoiding physical restraint to be necessary with a student. So, the updates to this policy are hopefully capturing that in a more comprehensive manner so that the focus on de-escalation is within the policy a little bit more clear. At the beginning of the policy, you'll see the continued definitions of the policy in alignment with the regulations. But then, as you continue, you'll see further information around some of the amazing things that are implemented within our district. The good news is that when we went through the district's review with the integrated monitoring review, we were found in compliance with all of our practices through our interviews, through all of the things that they looked at, but the policy did not reflect all of the things we were implementing. And so, we sort of advanced this policy review out of order for that reason. In looking at the policy, some of the proactive measures that we do want to emphasize is making sure there are the tiered sort of approaches that are across and available for all students. So, we have a universal social-emotional curriculum now for grades pre-K through eight. That's called Second Step. That's highlighted within there. There are a lot of other components where there are common corners in classrooms. There are support teams in place. This is something I'm allowed to live and breathe every day as a team chair. So, they're happening, so it's great that they're highlighted within the policy at this point. I won't belabor the point in terms of just all the bulleted information that's there for the de-escalation and proactive measures. We consult with outside agencies. We make referrals. These are all practices that are living and breathing within our schools right now. In addition to that, I wanted to also just highlight that we included a component around parents' rights and notifications within this policy. There is an addition of a description around the curriculum that's utilized for prevention of physical restraint and de-escalation called Safety Care. We previously used something called CPI, which was Crisis Prevention and Intervention. And so, this is a shift in our curriculum. We've been using it for several years now. And it's really focused, and you'll see in the description, they're really focused on that prevention component, the safety, a humane approach. So, all of those components are in there as well, as well as the scope and sequence. And then, last but not least, are updates to the reporting requirements and then the grievance procedure, which is new. There was not previously a grievance procedure included in the policy. So, the addition of that is to really support our reflective practices and make sure that we're considering if there's ever a consideration that there's been any misuse of physical intervention by staff or by any sort of individual working with children, that we have a policy that we can go through to review and grieve that process. So, that is outlined in the policy as well.
That is a very quick outline of some of the changes. But does anyone have any specific questions around the physical restraint policy?
I also want to highlight that we brought this policy before the policy subcommittee last week. So, we went through a review there. They made a few suggestions such as taking out all the acronyms and writing down what exactly all those terms mean. So, you'll see those few changes reflected. But I'm sure Melissa can answer any other questions that you have.
I have a couple of quick questions. My first is, is there anything in here, should be in here about children who physical restraint should not be used on for any number of reasons, like, you know, past physical trauma or something like that that would actually be detrimental?
So, within the policy, there is a consideration for a waiver. So, if a student happened to have individualized needs that required a waiver because of their trauma background, because of medical complications and things like that, they have a piece in here that would cover that piece to a student's profile. So, all the individual considerations.
And then, my second question is, on page four, it says, "A member of the school committee shall not be precluded from using such reasonable force." I don't think any of us would actually utilize that, but I'm just wondering why that language is in there.
That's a good question.
Meg looked at other sample policies and typically works really closely with our legal counsel, so she created that specific language. We can double-check with her.
It's not, at least, I'm not trained. I don't know if anybody else is. I'm assuming no one else is.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah, so I don't know that that, it just makes me uncomfortable that that's in there.
What part are you in?
Right here.
Second-to-last paragraph on page four.
I had the same question. I mean, I'm not in favor of voting this in until we get clarification of this because, you know, again, like, somebody could be trained to, to be restrained, but like, it's not a school committee member to all of a sudden see something going on. And not that I think this current school committee would do it, the members here, but you never know who was in the future, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We need clarification on that.
Yeah, it even says agents of the school committee. So, I could send my agent in to.
I thought that means like employee, like teachers.
Well, it says employees is separate. It says teacher, employees, or agents of the school committee.
Do you have an agent?
I do.
Yeah, I'd feel better if we clarify with Meg, because I don't have an answer to that, so we can get that information and talk about it at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Great, thanks. Anyone else have questions?
I just had one question. So, the policy makes a ton of sense to me in the elementary, maybe even the middle school environment. Are there any variations at the older levels or potentially even with 18-year-olds at the high school level? And then, when RSOs are potentially involved?
The SROs.
SROs. Did I say RSOs?
So, typically, the SROs do not participate in any situations unless it's, they're called because there is like a police presence needed. So, the safety care training is specifically meant to be a de-escalation technique. And then, we do have teams at every school that are trained to respond in situations because there are times where a situation does happen at the high school. As far as I know, the training is the same for all grade levels.
It is the, yes, the training is the same for all grade levels. I think what, during the training sessions themselves, what's wonderful is that we have within district trainers. So, we're able to problem-solve specific situations at any given level within the district to help understand, how would I tailor this to a student that's 18 versus a student that's four years old? We're able to role-play specific situations and talk through the way we would handle that. Again, in addition to just their age, we also consider their disability, their ability, their communication skills, all of those factors kind of come into play when you're addressing an age like this.
Okay.
But the curriculum itself does cover quite a span. I actually don't, I was just looking, there isn't even an age component on it because I think it spans any type of crisis prevention.
It's really important at the high school level that we do so many proactive things to prevent situations from this escalating to that level beforehand. I think that's really the most important key to the training and their practice that they do together.
I mean, that's what I'm obviously thinking, most of it's just the safety of the teachers and the surrounding students. This physical restraint may not even be practical at that level.
Correct, and you do have to outweigh, you know, what is the safest way to handle this situation? Is it just, and the curriculum goes through this, is it just to prompt the child and wait? Is it to really just have that, give them that space and wait for them to de-escalate on their own? And that is one of the strategies that we implement quite often, and it's very effective.
Okay, thanks.
We also have Meg look at, on page four, subsection I. It just says, "Making reasonable efforts to orally notify a parent of the use of restraint on a student within 24 hours of the restraint." That's a long time if your child's been restrained.
We talked about this in the policy subcommittee meeting. Sorry to interrupt you. It was a question that we tripped onto, like, these timelines seem crazy long given a certain time of day. And what we were sort of told was that was the maximum allowable by the law, and there's no practice in which any effort would be made to wait that long, right? It was more of an immediate.
So, in practice, we're calling that parent right after the incident is handled and everyone's back to safety. We're letting them know via phone call that that's what's occurred. If we're unable to reach them, we try again to reach them via email, so to say, we really need to speak with you. And we always make some type of contact prior to the end of the school day.
So, I haven't read every subsection now that we've had the conversation, but I wonder if it would be more advantageous, especially for parents, to know that you will be making those efforts, but that contact will, has to be made within 24 hours by law? Because if I were just picking this up, I would be concerned.
Yeah, it was kind of our concern too. So, maybe there could be sort of efforts would be made immediately, and contact will be made in accordance with state law within.
We go back and forth a lot at the policy subcommittee about what needs to be in policy and what's actually a procedure or a practice. So, they tend to be broader in the policy. We can certainly tighten it up. We go back and forth on time, but should it be a policy or is it just our practice or a procedural, you know, issue? So, this kind of like toes that line, I think.
And sometimes, practice can be too much minutia versus the procedure if you memorialize everything.
Yeah, I just think the notice is important to memorialize. There's lots that can go by the wayside that can just be handled in practice, but I think for the sake of parents who are on the other side of this, to know that they're going to be notified immediately. I just imagine like if this happens at 10 o'clock in the morning and that kiddo gets off the bus in the afternoon, according to this, the parent might not even know, and this child's dysregulated and what happened?
It would return to school without you even knowing. Like, if it happened at 10:00 AM, in theory.
And I don't think that's our intention, but that's how it's communicated. So, I think it should be communicated better, that our intention is not what's here.
That's good feedback.
In the same note of that, and I wish we'd brought it up the other night, I wish I had, but in the same idea about the notification of a principal in 4602, if a student is restrained for a period longer than 20 minutes, program staff shall obtain approval of the principal. Is that the same, is that actually how that works in practice?
In practice, the principal, the principal is typically involved in the situation with us at that point. If there's a safety concern, the principal or an administrator is involved right away at the start of the scenario to help us make those decisions in the moment. If for some reason they're off-site or something like that, they're notified within, before that timeframe. Within the 20 minutes is maximum. Again, those are all based on the regulations. What happens in practice is a little bit more conservative than what that says, but those are, those are the regulations. I think that's what the policy is based off of, is that.
Yeah, it reads as program staff shall obtain the approval. Like, they should go ahead and do that. I wonder if it's that shall became must, you know, program staff must obtain the approval of the principal. They've already probably got it.
We always do, but yes, I understand what you're saying. I can look and see if that's just part of the regs from the state in their language versus our language.
Right, yeah, I don't try to supersay anything, but I agree with Tasha that I think parents are, we have to kind of read these from a policy creation standpoint, but also a parent standpoint, because this is how some people are informed about the kind of issues that might affect their child or children in their class.
Okay, thank you for your feedback. Anybody else?
My last thing would be the grievance procedure. Would we want somebody from either the assistant superintendent or superintendent to sit in on that as well? Because you might want that, I mean, if there's a complaint, it's probably a pretty serious complaint and could be liability to the district. I mean, I don't think the student services, but I do think it would be better to have somebody from the top leadership team to also sit in and be part of that process.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to Michelle McEwen.
Good evening, everyone. I have two things for you tonight. In your backup, you have the draft district calendar for the 2025-2026 school year. Our anticipated return to school date for the staff would be August 25th. We've successfully implemented this process in the past two years where we have a day focused on safety and security, and it is our first professional development day of the year. It helps us to ensure that all staff is trained before students walk in the door. So, we have two days that are highlighted in red. One would be the professional development day, and then the 26th would be our welcome back to school day where principals are working with their staff, getting them acclimated to the school and getting the school year off to a good start. Students would return to school on Wednesday, August 27th. And from there, the calendar is very similar to years that we've had in the past where we have certain holidays that we've noted. The December break, we built in the half-day for the 23rd. Unfortunately, the way January works is the first is a holiday on a Thursday. So, we made the call that we did have room in the calendar to have that Friday be a day off for students. We would return in January on January 5th. We also made the decision, most years, we do our April professional development day, the spring one, on the April voting day. We found that those voting days have a very small turnout typically unless it's something like a presidential election or a larger election. And March has no break whatsoever in it. So, we decided to work with the union to choose a day in March to run our professional development day. We also feel that's going to be really beneficial to the staff because if we are training or bringing in any new programs, it gives us time to give them that training and have them be prepared to kind of try it out before the end of the year. So, we're going to switch our last PD day from April to March. And then, we anticipate last day of school being June 15th if there are no snow days. And if there are up to five snow days, it could go as late as June 23rd. We've also listed on the calendar anticipated open house dates for all schools. High school graduation on the Friday night, June 5th, and conferences and report card dates for the upcoming school year.
Anyone have questions?
I have one. For the, on April 7th, it looks like late election next year. Will there be any disruptions for the high school if there's an election of people coming in and out?
We've worked it so that they will close down the gym and people can only come in and out through the gym doors, and then we'll have an alternate space for students to do PE that day. Other than that, we'll run business as usual.
How's parking going to work if school's in session that day at the high school?
We'll just have to figure it out. We've done it before. I mean, it's actually, there's not an easy answer. I mean, it gets tight, but we just have to pre-plan and we'll have to make it work.
I think they should hang out with the kids in the middle school gym.
There's options.
Any other questions?
We'll be asking for vote for that later on. And then, it's my pleasure to welcome Principal Haviland to discuss next year's program of studies for North Attleboro High School. One of the things I love about this process is North Attleboro High School really runs in a collaborative team approach where our curriculum instructional leaders spend their time really working with the people in their departments to look at all the courses they offer, listen to students, and think about their student interests. And so, this year's program of studies really represents that collaborative approach to teaching and learning. We do have some exciting new courses that we're looking at, and then some other revisions as well. Welcome.
Awesome, thanks. Welcome. Good evening, everyone. So, I am excited about this program of studies. I am every year, but I like the program of studies. I'm proud of the people that wrote it. The leadership team at the high school is invested, as Michelle was saying. The other piece that I think is, that I'm impressed by and grateful for is the extent to which this program of studies proposal is aligned with the district vision, successful all students, enhanced deeper learning. It's very much aligned with the high school's new mission statement and our learning culture that we've created. And so, it crosses a kind of a lot of different pathways, I guess, for lack of a better term. We have 17 different modifications in this proposal, and they kind of account for an effort to improve academic support and course alignment. And this is an example of how our teachers are paying attention to kids, identifying what their needs are, and just caring for them and trying to find ways to meet them where they are. So, introducing targeted interventions for students requiring additional academic support, you see that in your packets through the ELA and math labs. Another example is a plan to introduce Calculus Honors, which is a non-AP option. Right now, we have students that want to take trig pre-calc, and then the only place to go from there is to go through AP Calculus, which is a great course, but some of our students don't want to do that. And so, having this Calculus Honors option is a good opportunity for students. The other piece in terms of our learning culture, you know, authentic, relevant, high interest, all those words are the ways we engage students more deeply in their learning. We've introduced courses that align with student interests and real-world applications. Sociology is a new course, sports statistics, sports officiating, nutrition, sports medicine. You see a lot of sports in there, but we're leveraging content to connect it with high interest. And in doing that, we see spikes in enrollment, and, you know, kids want to take those courses and they learn more, more deeply. We increased the relevance and application of course offerings. We streamlined and enhanced curriculum. We're going from mechanical and electrical engineering and moving it from being one or the other for students and moving it to an Engineering 1, Engineering 2 model so that it can be a hybrid. Someone can take an Engineering 1 course and not move on to Engineering 2, but other students who are interested in engineering would take one and then go on to two. But they, both courses cover the entire gamut that mechanical and electrical would have covered and more. The other part that I'm particularly excited about is the cross-disciplinary piece and the deeper learning connections and opportunities that come from that. We have a new class called Art Shop. And the spirit of the work that's gone into creating that is to connect art learning that might be more traditional in art class, but to connect it to our business and marketing courses so that students in art are learning how to leverage their talent and skill in being creative and creating, you know, artwork, but having it count for something beyond just the classroom, having it count for, you know, one as just a work of art, but also the opportunity to connect it to business and business standards. And we're even working on relationships with local businesses that can provide kids with really authentic experiences to have their art kind of count for perhaps a product that a business might make. So, we're excited about those things, and it's that piece that the high school is transforming itself from an educational standpoint to make things more relevant and authentic and make it so that students are much more likely to participate deeply in their learning in an enjoyable and beneficial way. So, we're excited about the changes and the proposals and looking forward to moving forward and putting these in place next year.
Any questions?
Just one point. I was really excited about this when I was reading the pre-read, because I think it ties back to what, the focus on career-ready learning and like real-world experience. I particularly liked the idea of the sports statistics, actually reflecting on a class I took in college, which was like regression analysis. And it was one of the most popular classes in school because the professor had done work with Major League Baseball and had kind of had all of that. And so, our projects basically were all sports-related, regression analysis, trying to predict future trends and attendance and things like that. And I just think that that's an example of taking the real-world application and really helping kids connect the dots, like, this is what I'm doing in the classroom, and this is how I'm going to do, you know, be able to do that in the real world. And then, it makes me excited too for how that connects to the ed plan, which will connect to the new high school, and those opportunities to really kind of show those things, make it come to life for kids. So, I just wanted to say that the team did a really nice job, and it's fun to see that courses continue to evolve.
Yeah, looking forward to that. And we kind of had a similar conversation.
Yes, I was laughing just now, and I just, there is some appointment, I repeat myself from our subcommittee meeting, but I shared that I failed a course, failed a math course in college. And the next year, I wanted to take the same professor to show him that I could do it, and it was the same material, but he just decided the next semester, or the next semester, that same material was now going to be all about Las Vegas. The whole class was Vegas-themed, odds, you know, probabilities, all of this. And I ended up getting an A in the course, and nothing changed. And at the end of it, he kind of said, it was the same stuff, you were just more interested. And sometimes, you got to match the interest, you know? It just had real-world application. Not that I'm a gambling man at all, but it was more fun to learn math that way. So, I think we talked about that, a little bit of matching high interest to applicable things in students' lives, kind of meeting them where they are.
I think to keep adding to that, just one more thing is that, well, you see the word sports in three, at least three of the courses that we're proposing. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's a course for athletes. It's a course that will invite more students into an experience that's more relevant, especially as it relates to things like officiating from a career standpoint, sports statistics from a mathematical standpoint. That's the thing that high school kids are looking for, and that's, you know, high school-aged kids are more likely to ask, "Why I need to learn something?" than younger students are. And so, that's where you meet them, where they are. The art course will invite more than artists into that course because of the business piece, because of the marketing piece. And so, that's what we want. We want kids crossing the hall to connect with each other in different environments. So, we're excited about that.
The art course is exactly career stuff to me too, because it's not just art. It's also this kind of creator economy and this new entrepreneurship model that this generation is showing us can be viable. We're providing academic basis for it. So, it's not just art, it's, you know, selling, marketing. It's kind of, and full process. It's really, really neat. Really wanted to highlight that art shop class. I think that's very.
I love what you said on that point too, to question, about the connection of the local businesses and like creating that value connection between what's happening in the high school and how that can service the students, but can also give back to the community. I think that that's really important. It actually even makes me think about the, one of them's in the room, right? The two guys who went to the senior center and was running, running the tutoring classes for seniors. I just think, like, what a great experience for those guys, but also what a service you're providing to the community. I think the same can be said about what you're doing with the local businesses.
Yeah. Yep.
If I can make a point. I was just going to say, from a student's point of view, I feel like that would be beneficial to connect ideas almost, allowing students like explore different things outside of just, just learning art. You're learning art and business. It's like a connection of things. So from a student's point of view, I'd like to see that.
Yeah. That's the objective. Right?
I also just wanted to highlight the unified PE. I think it, you know, expanding that to grades nine through twelve and two and a half credits. I think it just, you know, speaks to just creating more inclusive environments within our school, so.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, expanding it. It's a high-interest experience, and so creating that opportunity, students can repeat it and kind of refine their skills, work with students, especially kids who might be aspiring teachers, perhaps special educators, which is a, kind of an unwritten intention. But having it nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, I think is going to allow more kids to have the opportunity. So we're excited about that, too.
I agree. I love it. Thank you.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Official, I think it's six thirty.
No, it's perfect. Six thirty?
Perfect.
All right. So it's six thirty. So we're going to call to order the budget meeting. Sorry, I'm just trying to see if this has anything specific. For the fiscal year 2026, school operating budget.
Yeah, we do this, we do this every year. It's a statutory requirement that at some point in the budget season, you hold an official budget hearing. It's kind of a, kind of old law, sort of predated the internet, cable TV and all that. But it is still a statutory requirement. So even though we talk about the budget at several meetings over here, we do need to open and close an official budget hearing. So with that being said, and this is actually our first opportunity to discuss and, you know, potentially deliberate after the presentation that I made last month. So let me just, let me just connect real quick. I am not going to go through the presentation again, but let me just, just a couple slides through. Keith?
Do we have to open the public?
I think you have to roll.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Robert, roll.
All right. So I'd be looking for a vote to open the.
You need a motion.
I'd be looking for a motion. Just tell me what to say.
I moved to, I moved to open the public hearing on this twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six school budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. All right. The meeting is over. Thank you.
That was easy. So quick, quick refresher, probably three-slide refresher of where we were. So one thing I always like to talk about when we develop a budget is, you know, on an annual basis, we do sit down and think about, you know, how we want to proceed with budget development. We create guiding principles. And this year, our kind of main guiding principles, one is that I, I think was really important, really incumbent upon us, I think, to develop and present a needs-based budget, whether or not things get funded. I think it's still important to discuss kind of what the needs of our students and needs of the school department are. I always like to say, because a need goes unfunded, doesn't mean the need has gone away. So that was one of our guiding principles. I think sustainability is important. We, we are in several areas of the budget. We just, we're just getting by barely, if at all, in, you know, areas like facilities and maintenance, you know? And at some point, athletics, you know, at some point, we need to develop something that's sustainable. So we're not, you know, we're not in a panic every year trying to balance, kind of balance, balance the end-of-year budget. And then the, the third is, is just fair and equitable. And by, I'm really referring to really wages when I'm talking about fair, fair and equitable. We do have several contracts that are outstanding, and we've built into this budget, you know, market adjustments or cost of living estimates. And I, I just think it's important that we, we provide fair and equitable wages for our tremendous faculty and staff. So that is built into the budget. In terms of the actual budget, the total cost of operations for the North Ottawa Public Schools is, is over fifty-seven million dollars, fifty-seven point two five million dollars. And the budget document, as you all know, provides as little detail or as much detail as you want. It really, we have over four hundred line items in our budget. If you want that granular level of detail that's available for you and also for the public, we also have, you know, sixteen, seventeen exhibits that break that number down in a lot of different, lot of different ways. So there's sort of something, something for everybody in that budget document. I always like to point out that we, we have almost four million dollars of outside revenue that we use to offset that total cost of operations. That's grants, user fee revenue, tuition revenue, that type of thing. That's all listed in the budget document, but that's a significant amount of money. It's something we have to monitor because that, that number can fluctuate. But that, that is helping reduce the obligation to the taxpayer by utilizing that outside revenue to kind of balance, to kind of offset those expenses. We did present, because it's a needs-based budget, a fairly significant year-over-year, year-over-year increase this year, eight point nine one percent year-over-year from FY twenty-five. Contained in that fifty-seven point two five million dollar total cost of operation, our salary budget alone is over forty-eight million dollars. That makes sense. Education's a very people-driven business. In our case, salaries represent eighty-four percent of our total budget, which is significant. And I just want to mention here, we, like I said, I alluded to it, but we have three unsettled collective bargaining agreements. And so there are cost estimates built in that's not finalized contracts. We also, I always like to point this out, only because special education is, is a, one of the most important things we do in, in public schools, but also it's got a significant, it had significant impact on our budget. Over eighteen million dollars of our total cost of operations comes from special education. That's almost thirty-two percent of what we spend. So it's something that we closely monitor, we closely manage. It's a very well-run organization, but there are over eight hundred students who are in individual education plans in North Ottawa Public Schools. And it is, it is something we need to consider as we, as we build a budget every year and manage a budget. Totally unrelated, but also something that we pay close attention to is our facilities and maintenance budget, our operations and maintenance budget, you know, four point four million. Within that, there's one point three million dollars of, of utility costs, right? And I point this out because there are so many things in our, in any school budget, but certainly our school budget as well, that are really beyond our control. A lot of it's driven by regulation, driven by need, such as needing to keep the lights on in our buildings, heat our buildings, and that type of thing. And so I point out those three categories because when you consider salaries, special education, and the operations and maintenance, those three things I just pointed out, those three, those three things alone account for ninety-five percent of our total operating budget. Despite the big number, fifty-seven million, and again, this is not just North Ottawa, we have very, very little discretionary funds in, in, in public schools. We just, we just do. And I mean, I could, I could continue down that list when you consider things like legal services or just basic supplies and materials. I mean, we need to operate, you know, our, our, our nine buildings and meet the needs of our four thousand students and, you know, over six hundred staff. But that's a significant portion of our budget just in those categories. And in terms of kind of the, the, the what's new in FY twenty-six budget, again, because it's needs-based and we have a lot of detail in the budget for you to, to look at, there are over twenty new positions that we put on the table for discussion, recognizing fully that we're not going to be able to fund all of those. But I think it's really important to discuss our needs. And I just want to remind you that this entire budget was developed by our entire leadership team. A lot of time and energy and effort and thought goes into it. These ideas are generated from the people running our buildings and educating our students every day. We don't do this in a vacuum, very importantly. And the final thing I want to point out is just, just to remind you that when I talk about sustainability, this is subject of a lot of conversations already, but we have a significant deficit this year and last year in athletics. So this, the FY twenty-six budget does increase the operating budget by one hundred thousand dollars. And it, and I am recommending that we also increase the user fee from, from one fifty to two fifty. So it's something we could talk about however, you know, you want to talk about it. And really, that's it. And this is just a summary-level chart that breaks down, you know, expenses and salary, you know, basically salary, non-salary accounts. It shows you the FTE breakdown, and it's just sort of a one, a one-stop shopping exhibit that I always, I always like to use. And if you see this red line here, this, this red box up top here, again, I'm using the term sort of total cost of operations. That's what it takes to run the district, fifty-seven million dollars. We do bring in this outside revenue that I mentioned, and so it gets you to a net budget of fifty-three point four. So at some point in time, when we decide to vote the budget, if it's tonight, it's tonight. If it's a future meeting, this would be the number that you're, that you're voting. So your, the recommended FY twenty-six budget would be fifty-three million, four hundred forty-six thousand, seven twenty-three, again, which represents eight point nine one percent increase over FY twenty-five. I'll stop there for, for this purpose.
Any other questions?
I have a question, might not have an answer right now, but is there any indication that some of our revenue offsets that come from federal grants, might they be affected by new administration? And anyway, if special education is up in, is there any indication that K through twelve is getting to be threatened the way that universities are?
Unknown, but we're very nervous about it. We're very nervous about it. The good news is, even when, if you remember the news last week, that the, the new president put a, a freeze, a temporary freeze on a lot of grant funding throughout the country. He ended up lifting that freeze, but our, our entitlement grants, special education, Title I, those were not impacted even in that freeze. So it, I, I hope that bodes well for the future, but we have no idea. It's something we're closely monitoring.
Are the Title I and Title II, is it two A or?
Yeah, we have Title II, we have Title IV.
Eight, four.
So are those overseen by the Department of Ed? The US Department of Ed?
They're, they're, the funding comes from the federal government to the state. The state administers the grants, but they are, they are federal funds.
Okay. But are they filtered through the Department of Ed? Does the Department of Ed have something to do with calculation or award or?
I believe so. The federal Department of Ed, I, I believe so, but I, I'll have to double check. I don't know where else it would come from.
Okay. The reason I'm asking, I don't know if you've seen, but in today's news, there was the executive order that came out. So that's, I just wanted to follow up on Charlie's question.
Yeah, they'll look into it, potentially abolish the Department of Ed, yeah. So, but those have to land somewhere, but we're all, again, it's a great question. We're very nervous about it. But hopefully, that, Title I, the, the specialized grant's called, it's, it's this grant here, the IDEA. It's the two forty grant. That impacts every single school district in the country. Red state, blue state, doesn't matter. So I, I hope those are protected, but we'll have to see.
I know the answer is, but I want to ask just because I want to say, what does Title I, the Title I grant cover for the district? What's it used for?
You know, the, all the offsets off the top you had. It's basically, it's, it's teachers and tutors at, at community school, right?
Right.
Math tutors, reading teachers, math coaches.
Reading teachers. Great. All right. And then Title II A? I don't know that one.
Give me that. What's Title II A? Is it professional development or? I'll have to show you what, I have to look directly at the options.
Three is ELL, four is professional development. Title II, we have been able to cover, for instance, a bubble classroom teacher through that in some years. So if you think about AMVET school, having that extra class, things like that go in Title II.
Right. And Title I is based on finances, essentially.
Issue economic.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I have a few. So is it the processes, we're going to vote in a fifty-three million dollar budget, fifty-three point four? And I guess it kind of leads into a comment, is I just find this exercise frustrating because we're going to put, vote in a fifty-three billion, million-dollar budget that's not even going to get closely funded, and then this town's going to give us another thing, another budget. I mean, I think, to be honest, the budget process is somewhat broken because last year, we asked for, I don't, maybe personally, I don't think asking for an eight-point, and I know we have the needs and we're putting it out there, but I don't think it's a reasonable ask. Like, I know the town can't afford it, but I know when we asked for a reasonable amount, and then the state gave us extra, the town kind of said, no, you, you guys are all set. So it's kind of like, I find it frustrating that we can't just have a better dialogue and have a better budget process instead of us putting out an, almost a nine percent increase, a four million dollar increase, instead of being like, having the trust where like, hey, if chapter seventy comes higher, we're going to give you the money instead of, hey, you guys got three hundred thousand dollars that you can't spend on anything but supplies and CIP. So, I mean, I guess my question is, yes, is that what you're recommending to, for us to vote a fifty-three point four million dollar budget?
I'm not really making that recommendation. I guess that's what I presented. I mean, it's sort of a, I don't mean, you know, to put on you, but it's really the school committee is, at some, at this point, it's going to be the school committee's budget. Fully recognized, we're not going to get.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying.
At the same time, too, you can't have it both ways. We, we, we've played conservative the last couple of years. Quite frankly, it hasn't really paid off. So at some point, if they want to hear the needs, we're going to talk about the needs. So we haven't even had any conversation yet with the town about it. We're hoping to in the next week or so.
And that's where I'm, where my frustration is, with the whole process, but.
You had mentioned last time, too, that it's sort of a financial planning exercise to communicate long-term needs, so we at least have them on paper. And that's been a long-term complaint from the town, is that, well, if you had told me, we would have planned for it three, four years later. So, yeah, here you go. Whatever planning the town needs to do is at least available to them from us.
I, I think it's important that we put the needs out there because we do have a lot of needs. But I guess my question is, is once the vote is actually approved through the town council in June, some of the needs that we've identified as being high priority, and if we do have money, do those just basically get like, yep, we're like in on this one, we're in on this one? Like, how, how does that start to get identified?
I'm not fully clear about what you mean, like, process-wise, so.
Like, like, say we get, we do get a little bit of extra money than we think we will, and we can, say, hire a couple of extra people. How do those positions get identified?
I think we need to have that conversation here. I really, I, I really like to all be on the same page about what we're funding with what limited funds we have, whether it's tonight, next few months, whatever, I do want to, I do want to go, go through and prioritize. I will tell you, I'm very nervous about this budget. Some of these positions, I mean, we're talking class sizes of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-six. We should not be tolerating that as a community. I'm not suggesting that we, we shoot for nine percent. I'm not. I am suggesting we need to have a real, serious conversation with the town about making sure that we don't have twenty-eight kids in a class in North Ottawa. All right? And that, and that our special needs, the needs of our specialized students are met. And I can go right on down the line. There are clearly some things that are higher priority than others, which is why we put them in, you know, different tiered categories. But we all need to be on the same page about what we ultimately spend our money on. I wouldn't do it any other way, actually, so.
I have a one comment, one question. My comment is very nice, and I just want to plot it because people may have forgot. We had a January, previous month meeting that we had Principal Haviland, as well as district-wide staff and administrators here, remember, to present various arguments regarding some of those positions that were listed there. I think it was nice to have them there, and they could throw their little two cents and worth about the value of each, each of those positions. On that note, subsequent to that, we had the, the joint town council meeting, if you guys remember, with the, with the general policy overview. And I raised a question to, to our town, our town manager, Mr. Borg. And I've raised it before in previous years, and I directed to our superintendent here, question. Regarding the hundred thousand dollar Chromebook that we want to try to rotate, is that something you would approach Mr. Borg about putting in as a capitalization cost?
We, we have.
You have?
It's in the capital budget.
He's going to put it in the capital?
Uh, I, again, I haven't had communication.
We're in discussions. Okay.
It's in our, it's in our proposal.
All right. So I just want people aware that it just makes sense. I mean, it's, it's a depreciable product, running over five years. That's what we heard. So why not put in the capitalizations? It's one less expense we have to fight for. So let's see if that comes through.
Also, to, just a reminder, too, you know, I know, I was, we always focus on personnel. But when we talk about sustainability as a guiding principle, just remember, there's other things in this budget that we really took a hard look at, whether it's our operations and maintenance accounts, you know, emergency repair, just general maintenance needs. We're not really keeping up now. I mentioned athletics. Homeless transportation, we have, over the last, what, three or four years, probably go overspent that because our, our. years, probably overspent that, because our homeless population has risen. We're sort of making do, kind of rubbing from Peter to pay fall, if you will, to balance that budget at the end of the year. My point is that there are other things that we need to consider besides personnel, but we need to be able to run this district without scrambling, and I think that's, when I talk about sustainability, I don't know how else to describe it, but we need to make sure that our budget, no matter what the number is next year, is adequate, just to function, you know, as a, as a public school system.
So anyone else have questions?
Well, just for the committee, really, I felt really good coming out of the meeting in January, that these were prioritized appropriately, based on the comments from the staff, the faculty, and the administration. So A, it was sort of a question for us, like, do we agree with that? And then assuming we do, then it sort of feels like that, that needs to be the discussion, that needs to be had. You know, just from a process perspective, it is the town manager that sets the budget, and then the council's authority is to reduce a line item, that's what they're allowed to do, and the purpose of that is it allows the manager to still have control over the budget, while giving the council the ability to force changes, and really sort of forces a collaboration between those bodies as they build out the final budget. So I think it's just important that, you know, Dr. Antonucci does the work with Mr. Borg, but then, you know, we just make sure that the council, and maybe it's through you, John, just sort of taking this report back in the next school committee update, and just saying, like, you know, we've done a lot of work, they can watch the January meeting, all twenty-point-two of these requests are needs, they're not wants, you know, none of this is, you know, glitter and lipstick, it's all like real educational impact roles, and, you know, in a perfect world, we'd love to see that funded. But again, the same point that everybody's made here, you know, nine percent is not realistic, so we just want them to be aware of that as they're kind of having that negotiation with the town manager. So it like happens in two sides, where you've got the department head, John, and the town manager, Mr. Borg, negotiating that all in context, and then you have the council doing their legislative duty of approving that budget and/or making recommended changes. So I think they have to have the knowledge to be able to effectively do that, and if there's anything we can do through you, John, maybe, John, Mr. Costello, to make that happen. I think those two things need to ultimately come together.
Just, do you mind if I quickly follow up on that? Because I just want to, process-wise, I agree with you to an extent, but I really think, when I, I don't believe it's kind of one-on-one with myself and the town manager, the school committee has statutory authority, it's over the school department budget, it's an elected board, so, matter of fact, we're trying to coordinate a meeting now, and I've invited the budget subcommittee members to attend that meeting. I just think that's where the conversation belongs. The law is crystal clear that the school committee has authority, and so, I just, just a process-wise, I just want to let you know, like, I think that we need to have that elevated conversation on a regular, on a regular basis.
Yeah, thank you, totally. Because the school is different than every other department in town, almost every other department in town, in the sense that it has an elected body that has authority over that budget, so I totally agree. I shouldn't have said it the other way. Thanks for correcting me.
I just want to make that point, because I just think it's important for this.
Yeah, yeah, it probably hasn't been done, you know, in the last couple of years. Tasha, you've been, have done an awesome job, I'm not trying to say that, but just over the history of this school committee, there probably hasn't been as much engagement as there could have been.
I felt the same way coming out of the January meeting about the needs, I do appreciate that they're tiered, I do want anybody who looks at that list very, very closely and starts believing that it is alphabetical order within the tiers, so I want to make sure that, before people get too narrow about within the tier system. And the key word here, when it's going to start getting looked at, is need. Whether it's high or moderate, the word need is involved, these are needs of our district. A moderate need is still a need, which is more than a want, so as we, and everybody thinks about that.
Bless your body.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
So, Tasha, just order of operations here, I think this is what Ethan was alluding to, so when does the town talk about their budget ideas next? Does Ethan's point, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, you're saying, we're going to vote on a budget, it's going to get whacked back anyway, so why are we even, it's a useless vote, because it's not really, it's not, you're not, you're actually going to get that?
I guess we're just voting to make the request, we're not, we kind of get what we get, but we actually have to make the first volley.
We have, we do, we do, we do have to make the first vote, okay.
We don't have to, but the other weird thing about it is, too, is like, we don't act, and we should, don't get me wrong, we should, but we don't actually have to accept the town's budget, like, our budget's our budget, and we could tell the town to go find money to fund it, and I'm not recommending we ever do that, but that's how the law reads, that the school committee sets the budget, the town has to fund it. If I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure that's always.
I, I don't think technically that's, that's.
The intent of it is, so the town can't just defund education. But I mean, I'm not recommending to any do it, but I would say that, you know, we can pass this for now, and then it's just, I won't be here, but when the town comes back, there'll be a much different amount.
Yeah, I mean, my personal opinion is, I honestly would vote no on the budget tonight. Like, I think it's disingenuous to, like, vote a budget and the discussion hasn't happened yet, and I don't think there's, like, I think the process has to start, I think we have to communicate the desire number and the needs, but I don't think we have to, like, put our stamp on it and say this is an approved budget.
That's what I was getting at.
Because quite frankly, what if, like, let's just play it out, right? They come back and say, okay, you got it. Like, our voice is over, we approved the budget, it's funded, gone, right? Now, if we got all this, we'd be happy, but what if we did that last year, right? And had voted and approved that budget, and they said, good, you're funded, process over.
That's what they did last year.
They cut that added.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think the, in my opinion, the right answer is, a very thorough proposal has been put together, but the additions over the current state have been well documented. There's a plan in place to meet with the budget subcommittee and the town manager, right, and superintendent. Let that happen.
But does the superintendent lose anything if we, if he doesn't go back with a number?
Only if there's been some signal that he's not supported by the school committee, and he, like, has zero leverage, and that nobody's going to listen to him.
I don't think so. Yeah, I mean, the number's out there, they have the budget, and we're going to advocate for it, no matter, you know, no matter what, so.
So I don't know what the vote would be, then, that's like, are we voting on the number, are we voting on, we approve the budget?
I would vote on the number.
The number.
Because we don't, we truly don't oversee every line item in the budget.
Right. It just seems backwards to me, I like to see what, what.
Frustration.
Yeah, but it's, if that's the way we do it here, that's the way we do it here, but if John needs to take a number to the town administrator to start negotiating, then it is what it is, but.
I think John's saying no.
I don't think so.
But that number, does it have to be voted on, for that number to be discussed?
No, 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 I think we have, I think we, I'm comfortable, I think we have consensus here, that we all agree that this budget is well thought out, you know, based on our actual needs, and that's how we're going to start the conversation. I'm not going to deviate from that anyway, but I think we have consensus that that, yeah, that that's what the committee wants us to go in with, at least to the initial conversation.
I'm.
In the ultimate, we can vote on it anytime we want.
I'm concerned voting on it, because we have so many revenue offsets that come from federal sources, that I doubt we'll have a resolution in the next month on that, but there's some pretty big numbers.
That's the other thing, too, is the state's numbers get better, like, every month, basically, and you get more clarity on what it's going to look like. You don't have the final answer, we all know that, that's what's super frustrating, but it gets closer and closer and closer.
But we always use the governor's estimate in the sound, like, we told the town manager last year, hey, chapter seventy's going way up, and he's like, oh, yeah, well, I can't depend on that, they're going to whack something else, which didn't happen, and we left three hundred thousand to the table, so even though we know chapter seventy's going to go up, it's, we're not going to see a dime of it.
Yeah, I mean, just to be fair, and I know your point is that's not in the base level budget, but that money did come over last week.
Yeah. And they said it was, you know, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but it's not, what was, not in the base, not in the base, they made it very clear that it's not in the base, even though.
No, I just want to represent.
I know that, but I'm just, and I want to just point out, though, chapter seventy's not going to drop by three hundred thousand next year from the beginning amount we're going to get, but they made it very clear that was not at the base, and it's like, well, it's actually in the base of our, in the chapter seven, it's going to come over, so I'm, two different ways of looking at it. I'm looking at it from the school side.
I'm just looking at it as plain math, so if part of this eight-point-nine percent or whatever this percentage is that we're looking at can be met by chapter seventy funds, and like you're saying, we kind of defer until we have a better picture, then that's not such a bad thing, and then also, given the federal variability right now, I think we, it's a little premature to make a budget if you don't know that your revenue sources are secure.
I don't think we need to vote.
No, you have to ask for public comment.
Any public comment?
Sorry, just.
I need, like, flashcards, just like that.
Can I just mention, too, you know, between now and next meeting, too, if there's, if there's something you want to dig in a little more to, dig a little more into, excuse me, let me know, you know, if you want the principals to come back and talk a little bit about some of the, these positions or some of the needs, you know, they'd be happy to, I think it's very, it's really important to hear from them, but, so just let me know, you don't have to do it tonight, but if there's something you want to learn more about, we can, we could, I, I think it's really important to talk about the budget all the time, because it's, otherwise, we just go on a vacuum, and next thing you know, a number will spit out in June, and we're left with, we're left with, so to me, it's like, we start early, we might as well take advantage of the time to be able to dig in a little bit, just let me know.
Just philosophically, I think in the back of everyone's mind, and we've done this over the years, once that number crunching time comes, each one of us will have our own particular view, which things of those priority lists that we want to push, and that's where the discussion really comes in with the limited dolls, that may go above the base budget, and that's what it comes down to. I mean, we all know what we're looking at, it's that one-point-nine million extra twenty FTEs and programs that we're looking at, what portion of that can we actually fund? And that's where we come in, so we don't really have to discuss that now, we know, right now, we're all happy that it's all out there on the plate, and we all think they're, for our purposes today, they're equally important, that's the nice way of saying it, and then later on down the road, unfortunately, they won't be equally important, but that's because we are the arbiters, right, as school committee members, right? That's our job, whether it's painful or not, and we're not here to make friends with a particular member of the staff administration, we look at as, what particular piece there is fundable, and is that to the best benefit in our eyes as members to the, to the school committee? That's all it just comes down to.
I'd like to make a motion to close out the FYE twenty-six school operating budget, public hearing.
Second.
We'll call vote.
Yes.
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 All right, we're turned, and we're back in regular session. All right, so, we just finished our, we'll go back to Superintendent John Antonucci on the high school building project.
Oh, yeah, I actually have a very, I forgot about that, I have a very brief update. First is that I just really want to advertise the next, our seventh and next public forum, which is next Thursday, February thirteenth, at six P M. in the auditorium at the high school. It is, I think it's going to be the best community forum yet, because we're going to be able to show some really exciting developments in the project, so for the first time, we'll be able to show kind of early-stage design renderings, so that the building's gone from two-dimensional to three-dimensional, at least, again, early renderings, and so it's just going to be really exciting. You know, we've been talking about it for so long, where you're actually going to be able to start seeing what this building could actually look like, both on the exterior and interior. We're also going to be able to introduce at that meeting, the construction manager. So we've had the construction manager, search committee, they've been working very hard over the last few weeks, evaluating proposals and interviewing candidates. The construction manager is the third very important partner in this project, we have our project manager, Vertex, we have our designer, Jordan Whittier, and in this process, we're hiring the person who's going to build the building and work with us over the next, really, five years, actually, to build and ultimately turn the building over to us. I don't have a, that process is, is still ongoing, but we're finalizing it in the next couple of days, and we'll be able to introduce the construction manager at next Thursday's meeting, so stay tuned for more on that. And the final thing I'll say about that is, we're going to be offering tours of the building after the community forum. In fact, I need to send another reminder out, probably tomorrow, because my first message didn't have that, the message about the tours, but we're planning it, we're getting kids involved, students involved, and anybody that wants to stay back after the forum can come with us and see, kind of see the current building, and then see some of the deficiencies and some of the reasons why we're asking the community to fund this project in the first place, so, really exciting. So February thirteenth, six P M., high school auditorium. Hope to see everybody there. And that is it, actually, for my update.
Okay. To move on to school committee members, community announcements, and I promised John I would start with him, this is what I would go for.
I actually don't have anything to say.
Make something up, Jim.
One of the last things I want to say, but they're very politically charged, I don't think.
Yeah, I, one, just one thing, another, I've plugged this a few times, but this is the week, this Saturday, February eighth, six P M. at the high school, the North Ottawa High School Alumni Association will be holding our annual distinguished alumni event. Tickets can be bought at nahsalumni.org, or feel free to send me an email, we can get you on the list, tickets are fifty dollars, and just to highlight a couple folks, Ernie Sandlin is in the room, he's one of the honorees that I'm super excited about, and then the other one I was going to mention is Donna Newberry, so if you are an educator today, and you grew up somewhere between nineteen eighty and twenty-oh-four-ish, something like that, truth is, I'm making those dates up, but in that range, you probably were inspired by some way to go into the field of teaching because of the classes that Mrs. Newberry ran. I was not one of those kids, but I'll never forget taking a life class, I don't know, we're going to balance checkbooks or something like that with Mrs. Moon around the corner from Mrs. Newberry, she was always in the hallway, so friendly, so warm, just like one of those people that when you walk into a school, makes the school feel like a place you want to be. So eight total people being recognized, but I just want to mention Ernie Sandlin, Donna Newberry, Saturday, February eighth, six P M., be there or be square.
Let's give a clap for Ernie.
You should probably tell people there's free food.
Well, you pay fifty dollars for it, but.
Free comes with it.
Right after that.
Yeah.
My only announcement is, is for our seniors and our senior student reps, I hope the superintendent has it in his heart to give them a snow day on Thursday, because I know you don't have to make it up. Keep our fingers crossed.
I just would like to wish Michelle McEwen the best of luck on her pursuit of the Mansfield superintendent job.
You sure about that? No.
I just want to remind everybody, Valentine's Day is coming up, and every year I give a reminder that some kids can't afford Valentine's, so if you want to donate some, give them to the principal, or the school nurse, or somebody like that, and they'll distribute them as needed.
I just want to mention, I was able to attend the unveiling of the new mural at the high school, and I just wanted to say, if any of you guys are in the high school, definitely check it out, it's beautiful, and I, you know, props to the empowerment club, like, it's beautiful. So it says, "Strength lies in differences, not in similarities," and it's just a gorgeous piece of art with a good message inside the hallway, so.
I just have two things, quick comment, I did find some piece I read on my tie today, so happy Valentine's Day for those, and the only other comment I have is, just a little curveball, the folks at the subcommittee meeting last week know about this, this is my last meeting, I will not be attending the March meeting. This is what happens when you browse the internet. I was looking through, as you folks know, I've been planning to relocate down south, well, just less than two weeks ago, I was, unfortunately, telling my wife, oh, yeah, the place we're interested in this community, oh, they have some quick moves, I just made a comment, so what do we do? The following day, she buys one, so, we actually bought the house closed on, and our house is up for sale, and everything's all happening. Our house is up for sale and everything's all happening. So everything's closing. My house is closing at the end of the month, and we're purchasing the new house at the end of the month, too. It's all happening at the same time, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll put out papers, you know, I'll run for school committee in North Carolina. We'll see what happens.
They need it down there.
Can I just, Dave, on behalf of literally generations of community members in this town, you've served the community for a very long time. I remember being a younger person and seeing you on the Board of Selectmen and everything from then till where you are now. I think the town owes you a genuine debt of gratitude. So thank you for everything you've done. It's been a really exceptional example of service.
I'm also moving to North Carolina. I actually met with the, some members of the 12-plus program from our high school a couple of weeks back at Bridgewater. Those are obviously our students for, in the transitional skills program for 18 to 22-year-olds. They came out to, they come out every Friday to Bridgewater State to take a class on campus, kind of get the little flavor for college, especially some of them even end up at Bridgewater, which is fantastic. And got to have lunch with them. They had taken a Zumba class. I did not do the Zumba with them, but they, it was really great to meet with them. And I just really wanted to give like a little personal shout out to Leslie and Connor, the leads of that program. I mean, I was talking to them about what they do, and it's remarkable, and it's also the way they do it. They are just such a guiding light for these students. I mean, my goodness, these students adore them and also clearly are learning so much and having such a, like, a rich educational experience. So I'm really glad that they found a home at Bridgewater, and I mean, every day they're somewhere. So this 12-plus program is great, and I saw some familiar faces from our CPAC, the CPAC Awards. And they're very, just, they're great. So I just really wanted to say thank you to Leslie and Connor and the whole, and everyone who's supporting the 12-plus program is doing a lot. And in the ways of support, too, in a different, quickly in a different vein, we've mentioned it briefly, some of the federal executive orders and how they will have an effect here, certainly at the state level and most definitely in North Attleboro. There's a lot of concern. It's understandable. I want to, I appreciate the information that was sent out by the district regarding immigration, should raids or agents show up on our campus looking for our students. That is important to know. And also, just one more continued, both a plea, a reminder, and a thanks to the school district staff who are supporting LGBT, the communities, and trans students, and anyone who's feeling like their identity is being questioned publicly or attacked. It's so important to not only continue to do what state law requires us to do to keep people safe and reminder that executive orders are not, they don't compel, they don't supersede a state law at this point. But it's just so important to continue to remind the students that we're here there for them, not just do what's legally required, but also just emotionally, ethically required, so that our students know that we're there for them. So thank you to those that are doing it, and a reminder that please, let's keep doing it.
I just want to clarify one thing, Charlie. I think that email came from MASC or DESI.
Oh, thank you.
It didn't come directly from the district. It did come to everybody on the school committee.
I take that back, yeah.
But the district hasn't sent out.
Okay, just for, thank you. So to clarify, there was an email about the process in which what students the schools should be doing and what school committee members should be doing to help support that. So it was encouraging in the way of like having some guidance and principles, but that was a very important clarification.
I do want you to know, we're handling it, we're all over it. And matter of fact, we've had several meetings about it. And our principals are really handling it with their staffs individually, and it's something that we're all talking about, so.
Thank you.
Last chance, John. I'll come back to you now. All right, we'll move on to the action items. I'm looking for a motion to approve the bills dated January 8th, 9th, 16th and 23rd of this year.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I have just one kind of question, and that's KM Law. Looks like there's two invoices, one for SPED and one for Contract. I know she does both, but it just seems very coincidental that the amounts are the exact same.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have the, I could pull up the invoices. I'm not sure what they were for, but I know like, this current month, we just got Januaries, and I believe special education was $800 and general education was $7,000. So it all depends on what's happening in the month.
Yeah, no, I'm just making sure it's not a duplicate.
It's not, no.
Exactly the same.
They're completely separate invoices.
And that's why I assumed you sprouted between two, which is very coincidental that they're 100%. And then there was a $7,000 for Riley Tree. Were they doing maintenance or are they taking down a tree or?
Ernie, that Riley Tree one was over at, was that at the end of school?
The, it was actually the high school.
High school?
Yeah.
Oh.
The trimming the trees, the ones I've been drooping over out front in the walkways, trimming those trees. The town doesn't do that for us? Not on our property. So we have a forest tree department. It was identified as an issue that we should address, and we addressed it. Okay. That's kind of how we. I'm not, I'm not going to question you. I just think it's crazy. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Carries 7-0. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes dated January 7th of 2025.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? And motion carries 7-0. There's a section on here that just says discussion, and there's no explanation about what it is. Do you know what it is?
I think it's just sometimes, it's just part of our standing agenda. We don't have any discussion tonight. We sort of did it under presentations and stuff, so.
I wasn't sure if it was.
No. Right, Mary, it's just kind of a, sometimes we have discussion.
In case that was where we broke the budget hearing, because that was really the discussion point.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the next we'll turn on to, turn to issues requiring a vote. The first one is the vote to approve the revised physical restraint policy, which we're not taking a vote on tonight. So then the second would be the vote to approve the first reading of the 2025 to 2026 school calendar, which we've also deferred. Oh, sorry, calendar, we have not. We'll be looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
For a second? Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I should have looked at, do we need a first reading or can we just vote the calendar? I don't think we need.
If there were any discrepancies, I think you'd just vote on it.
I don't think we did it last year.
Yeah, we did. I just remember last year because there was something, there was a typo. I always find typos if I remember it. But I remember there were two readings last year, but I don't know that that's required.
We could certainly do it. It doesn't matter. I just.
We can amend the, we could amend the document and say vote for the reading, you know what I mean, instead of saying first.
We should probably just leave that because if you're a community member, you read this agenda online, you might think you get a chance to.
No problem.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
People start to ask for it now, so we'll make sure it gets voted in next time so we can share it out publicly.
Next would be the vote to approve the 2025 to 2026 high school program of studies as.
I don't think you voted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we just agreed to defer.
Can we post the draft, too?
Yep.
After, because now, because now, especially since we've already voted on the first reading.
Sure.
People may have comments for the second reading, which I highly doubt, but at least.
So, you know, we'll post it, we'll just make sure it's labeled draft. It'll be on the front page. Mary, can we do the front page of the website? It'll say draft 2025.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Sure.
We should vote, we should approve the first reading.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so.
You have a motion.
A motion. Who seconded? You seconded, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? So first reading carries 7-0. Next would be a vote to approve the 2025 to 2026 high school program of studies as recommended by the curriculum policy subcommittee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? And that carries 7-0. Next would be that we're deferring on the vote to approve the fiscal year 26 operating budget, so we're not going to do that tonight. Chairman's report, I just wanted to reiterate what Keith had just briefly mentioned, that the town did transfer 294,000 and change of Chapter 70 excess funds to the school department last week. The measure is not specific as to what we can use it for, although the council did have some conversation about what it would or wouldn't be used for. So I anticipate we'll have conversations about how that's going to be used in the coming weeks. It's just.
FY '25.
Yes.
The funds, okay. That's the current school year.
Yeah, it's probably a revolve.
I don't know what, I don't, I don't, they didn't specify.
We didn't get any communication about it, so, yeah.
It came out of free cash, and there's, there was actually no conversation about where it goes, so your guess is as good as mine. But we haven't had time to figure that out yet. So that's it on my report. So I'd be looking for a motion to return.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned at 7:19.